Good afternoon and welcome to City Council Meeting of October 31st. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that we all rise for the singing of our National Anthem. All right, well, thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem, and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. Moving along to the adoption of the previous council minutes, councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to counsel adopt the minutes of the City Council meeting held October 17th, 2022 as presented.
Perfect, that motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions. I will call the question. Please vote. What are you missing? Councillor O'Toole? All right, there we go. And that carries unanimously. Councillor, there's one other item of adoption in the agenda, councillor O'Toole. Sorry, can we just do 3.2 first? If you don't have it, it's...
No, council adopt the minutes of the City of Grand Prairie Organizational Meeting held October 24th, 2022 as presented.
Perfect. There's no comments or questions on that. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I just want to confirm, I'm not seeing it in the motion, maybe I'm reading wrong, but there was one committee meeting where you removed, and I just want to confirm that that will be... Oh, sorry, we've got a calendar later in this agenda, so sorry, never mind, yeah. Sorry.
The calendars are later, we can... Okay. So, no other concerns from the minutes of the organizational committee meeting? Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Now, we can go to item number four, the adoption of the agenda, councillor Teason.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you for that, that motion is in order. I'll call the question, please vote. Good to hear. And that carries unanimously. Moving along under item five of today's agenda, delegations. And if you are watching online, a reminder that we have slightly changed our process. In order to come to council, there is an online form that needs to be submitted by Thursday noon of the prior Thursday to council meeting. If you'd like to come to Standing Committee as a delegation, the deadline is Friday noon on the Friday prior to the Standing Committee. So today, we were aware of one delegation, let us know ahead of time they were coming, so appreciate you following that process. Today, the Community Foundation of Northwestern Alberta is here to speak to us, so please come on forward, and if you could introduce yourself for those who may be watching online, and I'll give you a minute to get set up. Thank you so much for coming. The process is probably about five minutes, and then I'll open it up to council for questions.
So, good afternoon, Mayor Clayton and fellow councillors and administration. My name is Laura Lavalley, I'm the CEO of the Community Foundation of Northwestern Alberta. First and foremost, I apologize for my scratchy voice. It's been a long week with a little bit of a cough, so anyway, hopefully I can get through this and you guys can hear me clearly. So, 2023 marks the Community Foundation's seventh full Vital Signs report, and we are currently seeking funding support to produce that. So, this will be our seventh full Vital Signs report. The first one was produced in 2011, and we run the project every two years. Vital Signs serves the City of Grand Prairie, County of Grand Prairie, MD of Greenview, and of course, those surrounding communities. It's part of a national project, and it's managed locally by our Community Foundation of Northwestern Alberta with the support of a Vital Signs leadership team. So that team consists of representatives from all three municipalities, as well as community leaders from a wide range of sectors. We are... Vital Signs project is the most extensive community-driven data program in Canada. Vital Signs reports on how we're doing as a region by measuring community wellbeing in 11 different issue areas, so things like education, economy, recreation, culture, and health, to name a few. Through data, it shows our quality of life today, tracks the changes of relevant issues, and it shows what's working well and what issues we need to address. It does this through gathering and analyzing the data from local, provincial, and national sources, as well as through our citizen survey that we do locally. And it's formatted in an easy-to-read format so that all citizens can glean the information. In our last Vital Signs, we were able to report on some of the preliminary data about how the pandemic was impacting our communities, and how we're being impacted by the many shifts and changes across our community. So we track things through oil and gas sector, labor shortages, reconciliation, those types of issues. Our next issue of Northwestern Alberta's Vital Signs could perhaps be our most important issue. We're on... We're coming through an unprecedented event, and that has impacted the lives of every single resident in our three municipalities and beyond. So we're not going back to normal, so we must look at how we're going to manage our new normal. So we're looking at things like, how did communities demonstrate resiliency? How are we navigating, what are the current challenges, opportunities, and successes? And ultimately, what is the path to move forward? Our Vital Signs can play an integral role in the recovery of our local communities by providing more clarity about what our communities look like today, and understanding how citizens are impacted, how they're adapting, and what challenges they continue to face. We're looking at digging deep to learn their perceptions and their feelings about specific issues in their community and their own quality of life. Local and provincial data combined with newly released federal census data will together inform our current situation. So we're really pleased to know that the census data is becoming available kind of as we speak, being released in different segments, so certainly looking forward to being able to include that in our publication. This will help us make informed decisions about our future based on data rather than those assumptions. So this next slide just talks about the timeline for our project, so we're looking at confirming our funding sources towards the end of 2022. Beginning in January of the new year to August, we will be engaging that community leadership committee to help us inform our project. Data collection will happen January to August. Our citizen survey will happen February to March. And then we will take August to compile that report and look looking for a fall launch, typically in early October of 2023. Our vital conversations in communities happen year-round, as we know that this data is only as important as in the people that have it in their hands. This slide shows our budget, and what I can tell you, councillor, is that it has not changed from our last request for the 2021 publication. We have been to the County of Grand Prairie last week and requested $20,000 from them as well, which they have confirmed that they are going to be providing that support again this year. We do have a request scheduled with the MD of Greenview as well, and a request with our local Chamber of Commerce. We have basically kept the report very similar, but we have seen an increase in the printing costs. As you can imagine, inflation even affects the cost of paper. So that is one increase that we have noticed. We do have a project manager that we outsource this work to, but a lot of the work does still happen in-house in our Community Foundation office here. And so basically, the ask is the same, and we're definitely looking to be very prudent with our expenses to make sure that we can get the project off the ground. Together, we have the capacity to create a powerful project that can inform local citizens and decision-makers, arming our community with those useful, timely, accurate, and local information, so we can move forward effectively with a more concrete understanding of where our greatest needs are, and how we can tap into our greatest strengths as well. Our Vital Signs report serves as to be a tool to mobilize, to give the community that power of knowledge. Community Foundation certainly looks forward to working with the City of Grand Prairie to support action towards creating vibrant, healthy, and resilient communities. That's all for my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Perfect, thank you so much for that presentation. I'll open the queue to questions for the delegate. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming again, Ms. Lavalley. Vital Signs to me has always been very important to decision-making around this council table. It gives us an extra pulse besides our own citizen satisfaction survey on what people are feeling and going through and experiencing in a variety of sectors, not just where the city impacts them. So I appreciate that from your group here. The question is for you, is just in your reach and your scope, so I'm just curious. When you reach out to the community, ask, what's your survey scope of the number of businesses, people, and other persons around the region and the city that you would contact? I know typically we get a couple thousands for citizen satisfaction survey. What's it like at the Community Foundation?
So, the last publication was informed by 1,200 respondents, and that was a little bit lower than we had hoped, and it was also due to the pandemic. In past years, the Vital Signs survey had been carried out in public places, lots of people moving through, and that they would, you know, do that survey for us right on a tablet that we had available, and that just didn't happen during the pandemic for reasons you're all aware of. So, you know, we'd like to see it upwards to that 2,000 mark again, which is what we'll be shooting for. It's really important to us to have that information from the schools as well to engage youth. We like to have youth over 14 involved in the survey, just to get their perspective, so we'll certainly be working on that. That was another challenge during the pandemic, that was a difficult thing to survey that group as well. So, yeah, we're definitely looking to have more people involved in that survey, and we're hoping for the best now that we're kind of a little more free-moving these days.
Awesome, yeah, thank you very much, I look forward to the results.
Thank you for that, councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for the presentation. I always look forward to the morning after Vital Signs gets released. It's always a fun morning to read and hear what's going on in the region. I don't know if this really clicked for me in the past that it's a national initiative. I'm always looking at just the local one. Is there any type of work done to create a database or dashboard or anything like that so that we can compare how we're doing to other regions and what Grand Prairie looks like, not just in our own region?
There's nothing of the sort so far, but most... There's 192 community foundations across Canada, and I don't exactly have the number with me today on how many participate, but it's a large majority that do. So there's nothing that's across the board put out by the Community Foundation of Canada that would kind of blanket all of the findings, but certainly lots of different community foundations that are participating. They do have it all on their website, and that's the first thing you'll see in most community foundations' website is that link to Vital Signs. But, yeah, nothing of the sort, but that's a really good suggestion I could take back.
And then, does that mean you're all asking different questions, or are there some centralized questions that are getting asked by all of them?
It's all different, and it's actually, yeah, it varies between the communities what type of information they're looking for. Some of those larger community foundations have the opportunity to issue even monthly Vital Signs smaller reports. We, of course, just don't have that capacity, but some of the larger foundations pump out a lot of really useful stats that come out a lot more frequently.
And I've got one more, if I may.
Go for it.
Great, thank you, thank you. Interesting information. I'm also curious if there's been any connection or work with? I know that we've been doing a lot of work in organization with Community Compass and Coordinated System of Care, and some of the work we're doing is... How is that connected with Vital Signs in terms of making sure that data that's collected is getting used and not duplicated?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, when we are working with our team that's, you know, made up of the three municipalities and those leaders of sectors in our community, we're actually looking to them to help us provide sources of data. So we did lean on the Community Compass to provide us some data through their... That worked with Helpseekers app, so that was partially informing the 2021 survey that we did. And so just really looking for those opportunities through that teams, for people to point us in the direction of where the data that we need to see, where we can find it. So, yeah, we definitely are looking for areas to connect and to make sure that we have all the data and reporting as much local information as possible.
Awesome, thanks again for the work that goes into it, it is important.
Thanks for that, councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am curious about how statistically valid your information is? If you're just doing 100% random sampling, or if you have some structure that makes sure that you have a certain percentage of women versus men, and balance of age groups? If you're doing anything to validate that statistical information?
There's no effort to make it particularly balanced, but it is reported on the demographic that is reported within that citizen survey. So there would be, you know, data that would show how many men, women, what demographic were surveyed, but we don't try to even the score and make sure that we have, you know, exactly the same amount, so it is quite random. Further to that citizen survey, we are looking at the data that is local, provincial, and national, so that it's pumped out from lots of other areas, but maybe not formulated into a publication that's all as it relates to the 11 key issue areas that we're experiencing in our three municipalities.
And I have one more question, Mayor Clayton. When you're collecting data, are you providing a link to your survey monkey or whatever you're using through other websites? Like, for example, is there a link on the city site that people can connect?
Yes, it's a... So we do, you know, lots of work to try to promote and make sure that we get that out. What we found in the last publication, there's a lot of survey fatigue, where people are just, you know, tired of doing surveys, there's a few heads nodding around. So that was definitely a challenge, but yeah, we're always, you know, we have it on our website, social media, we're looking for everyone that's around our table on that team to help us promote through their vessels as well, so yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Thanks for that, councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I really enjoy reading it, and again, I do question to some measure the statistical accuracy, but we all cherry pick and take out the good stuff, and that's how we sell our city. So I do appreciate that. So you'd mentioned how you have done it through the pandemic, but in 2023, how are you planning? Are you going to go back to the tablets in public places again, or how are you going to get these answers?
Yeah, I mean, I expect that our efforts are going to be to go back to what was working prior to the pandemic. That's also something that we lean on our community team to help us with, is to find new ways to make sure that we can have good respondents. And so that's something we'll be looking for, that team to help us provide new ideas and suggestions to help it be more effective. But yeah, I think we need to get, you know, in front of people where they're moving and convince them to take your survey.
Okay, and I have another question as well. So we're going into a four-year budget cycle, you're asking for $20,000 in 2023. Are we to assume that you'll also need this in 2025?
Yes, I think that's safe to assume. We're certainly looking at continuing to provide this publication to our region every other year, so yeah, the next publication would be 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I don't see any further questions. So I thank you for your time today. If you're not aware, we deal with delegation business at the end of our meeting, so you're more than welcome to stick around, or if you'd like to leave, someone from administration will follow up with you.
Awesome, thank you so much for having me.
Absolutely, thanks so much for coming today. All right, moving along, I'm just updating my agenda, my apologies. Moving on to item number six under reports. Item 6.1, there is a land matter as identified in your agenda. Looking for councillor O'Connor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council make plan, if I can read it. 1061AE, lot 32, lots 6, 7, 8, and 9. Marketable and approved to sale to the Woodland Cree Nation in the amount of $340,000, subject to the conditions of the offer to purchase.
And my apologies, before we have further discussion on that, I'll just look, Mr. Halliday, would you mind just a brief introduction on this matter?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So in August of this year, the city received a public land disposal application from the Woodland Cree Nation, requesting to purchase four city-owned lots for $340,000, subject to two conditions. First being provincial grant funding approval for the provincial funding in Indigenous Housing Capital Program, and then for approval by city council, which we are here for tonight. So this parcel was purchased by the city in 2019 for the intent of exploring primitive supporting housing. With the purchase of the Coordinated Care Campus, this land's no longer needed and is considered surplus in the city's land holdings. So yes, so administration is recommending that we make the lots marketable and sell to the Woodland Cree Nation in the amount of $340,000, subject to the conditions of the offer to purchase.
So thank you for that introduction, and there is a motion on the floor. We'll see if there's comments or questions on that motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving under reports under item 6.2, council and standing committee calendar of 2023. Just a brief introduction, this was discussed at our organizational meeting. However, it was identified in order for us to be inclusive of potential council activities and administration activities, that it would be helpful to align the break at Christmas when to match the students' time off. So if you're a parent, you don't need to look at acquiring additional daycare. So those holidays identified now align with the time that the schools are out over the Christmas holidays of 2023. So going forward, it makes it a little bit easier, and all those things, in my opinion, add up to make it more appetizing to run for council. And, you know, as we look at people who are interested to run for councils, there's many considerations that are given. One of them quite often is what you do with your children when you're not working, or when you are working, rather. So I think this works well for administration as well for council. So just, this is in your package for consideration as well. Councillor Bressi, I think you had... Counselor Bressi, I think you had another item, but before I go to you, I'll go to Counselor Blackmore.
I was going to make the motion.
Perfect, if you do that, we can deal with that one. Then I think Counselor Bressi had another one. It's there, okay? So go ahead, Counselor Blackmore for that motion.
I would move council approve the amendments of the 2023 council and standing committee meeting calendar.
Perfect, that motion's in order, Counselor Bressi.
No, I misread the minutes earlier. So what I was hoping to do is definitely reflect on it. But just want to say, I really appreciate this as a parent of small kids. It's a interesting job where you don't really get days off. Even on vacation, there's people that want to tag you, text you, whatever. And I find that's about the only week of the whole year where you actually get a week away without people wanting to chat with you. And so it really is, in this really weird, awesome, but very demanding job we have, it really is important to get that particular time with your kids. So appreciate this being brought forward.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. I spoke briefly with administration that it may not always land that way, but we'll keep an eye on it in future years, how it lines up with a student break. And didn't want to look to move it for this year because people may have already made travel plans based on how the schedule was expected to be. So I see no further comments or questions on this motion. So I'll call the question and please vote. That carries unanimously. Moving on to item 6.3. I'm just going to see this. Yeah, that'd be great, thanks. Recognizing Legislative Services Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. At the organizational meeting, council approves appointments to various external boards. After that meeting, I contact all those boards and let them know who you've assigned as representatives for the year. Upon contact with Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region and the Grand Spirit Foundation, they let me know that their bylaws do not allow for alternates to be appointed. So we just need to remove those from our lists.
Okay, so it's just the alternates we're removing off the identified list. All right, so Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'll make the motion that council amend the list of council representation, representatives on external boards to delete the alternative appointments for Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region and the Grand Spirit Foundation. Just speaking to this motion, yeah, it actually came to light for me just this last Friday as I was talking with Grand Spirit members online while I was at another conference. I said, oh, I was trying to get Dylan to sit in on this because he's my alternative. And they're like, it's not allowed in our bylaws. So that was news to me because that's how I found my foot in the door on Grand Spirit on the last term. So anyways, I think these are appropriate and we should be following the bylaws of those external committees that we joined. So I'd encourage council to approve this.
Perfect, that motion is in order. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to committee business, first item of business being the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held October 25th. And I will look to Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held October 25th, 2022, as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question, please vote. That carries unanimously. And Counselor Bressi had a couple items of business.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'd move that council approve de-ahension of one artifact from the Grand Prairie Museum's collection as listed in attachment one. And just speak to this, this is a fuel pump that used to be in the Heritage Discovery Center with, with that exhibit being closed to make room for the archives. The gentleman who originally donated this item, asked for it back. And our staff felt that that was very appropriate since we have similar artifacts elsewhere in our collection. And also because my understanding is this will be put on public display in another venue. So that's a great thing to happen.
Perfect, thank you for that. Seeing nobody with any discussion or debate, I will call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. I would move that council refer the Grand Prairie Curling Center's request for additional operating funding in the amount of $117,279 to 2023 budget deliberations, and refer the Grand Prairie Curling Center feasibility study capital project in the amount of $28,500 to the 2023 budget deliberations. Just speak to this, our administration's been doing work with the Curling Club over the last couple of years to figure out what it, what it takes to get their building fully utilized and help that organization be viable. They're doing very good work, but there's also been challenging, challenges, especially with utility costs for the last couple of years. And so I think it's prudent for us to talk about what's the appropriate level of support and budget deliberations are a good time to do that. So I hope the council supports us.
That motion is in order. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, another item of business.
Thank you. I'd move that council approve the city-county project with funding in the amount of $48,981.05 from council's strategic initiatives fund. Just speak to this, I'm always excited when we can work with our neighbors. I think that there's a really good amount of collaboration for, that's benefited our entire region, and I'm excited to see more of that happening.
Perfect, that motion is in order. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question, please vote. That carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bressi?
Thank you. The three things I'll highlight is, number one, there has been some growing concerns at the Community Knowledge Campus surrounding football games about some problem behavior that's been, that's been happening. And so there's been work with the Public Security Unit to get more enforcement eyes on there when appropriate. And there was a meeting that was going to be held with the user groups to start figuring out strategies to manage that. So very much that's on the radar of the city and want the public to know that. Second, there was a report in the Director's Service area that there's some tweaks to the transit service coming at the end of November. And so administration very much is working with both drivers and users of transit to continue to talk about how to make that service better for the residents who rely on it. And the third thing I'll highlight is that committee has an impressive outstanding items list. So good job, this committee that's doing a lot of good work.
And you were worried. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would just make a motion that council adopt the Invest GP.
Just wait, get there.
That's, I thought, where you rang.
Oh, all right, moving along. The item 7.2, the Invest Grand Prairie Committee Meeting of October 25th. Counselor Bressi, or sorry, Counselor Plot. Now I'm just going to bump you right out.
Well, we'll just start, we'll start that again. Thanks for, thanks for coming back to me. I just would make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee held October 25th, 2022, as presented.
Perfect, thank you for that. And that motion is in order. Any comments or questions? Any errors or omissions from that meeting? Seeing none, I'll call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Plot?
A few, it was our first meeting for the Invest GP Committee, which I'm quite excited to be chairing, and I think it's got a lot of potential for our city. So I'd like to reorg. Couple highlights because it has just started. Invest GP presented the award of young entrepreneur and distinction of Grand Prairie Chamber Awards of Distinction. We also, GP team invested, visited over 100 small businesses during Small Business Week, which I think is great to work in on the community. Also had their terms of reference for the MD plea review. And the process that we'll be taking on that is, that'll be a fairly big piece of legislation that'll be worked on with this committee. And, and then lastly, CAO Bob Nicolay, who is also the acting chair of this Invest Committee, did remind us that this, currently there's no outstanding items. So we need to get creative and put a few things on this list. So looking forward to some emails from you guys, thanks.
Absolutely, thanks for that. Moving along, item 7.3, the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held October 25th. And I will look to Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held October 25th, 2022, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Call the question, please vote. That carries unanimously. You had one item of business there, Counselor Blackmore?
Yes, I would move that council approve amendments to Policy 346, Reserve Funds as Presented. And then speaking to this, this is an administrative amendment which identifies two of the reserve funds as not requiring the interest they earn to be paid into them, as they are not necessary to be inflation protected.
All right, that motion is in order. Any comments or questions on that item? Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Any items you wanted to highlight, Counselor Blackmore?
Yes, there is, I just need to get them to come up on my screen. Some of the things that are happening with the city right now in this department are assessment and taxation supplementary assessments and tax notices were mailed out last week and are due by the end of December. This is for buildings that are added into the tax rolls since June. Financial Management Administration is preparing for budget deliberations, which will take place in November. And video surveillance project has been completed in critical area upgrades for work at City Hall. So if you show up here, you may discover you're on camera. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. Moving along to item 7.4, the Operational Services Committee meeting held October 25th. And Counselor Thiessen is going to represent this for Counselor Bosch.
Yeah, I'm the Bosch man for this committee today. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee held October 25th, as presented.
Thank you for that motion. That motion's in order, I'll call the question, please vote. Counselor Berg. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen, any highlights?
Yeah, just a couple highlights, no business to take care of. But our focus last week was winding up on our 2022 construction projects around the city. And I did take a drive around on Sunday. And I noticed that all the line painting has been done, all the streets have been paved. And commendation to Mr. Glavine and his team in operational services, as well as to Mother Nature for making sure that we could get those jobs done. Also, our winter equipment, speaking of Mother Nature, is ready to go and in the process of being changed over. For what equipment needs to be changed over? Sand and salt has been delivered, it is stockpiled. And also our fall tree planting is winding up. The good weather has been good for planting trees here late into the fall season as well. And if we get more falls like these, we'll get a lot more work done in the future. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Great, thanks for that update. Moving along to item 7.5, the Strategy Communications Services Committee meeting held October 25th. And I'll look to Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held October 25th, 2022, as presented.
Right, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Berg?
Yes, thank you. By election, city clerk, by election is complete with 2,422 votes cast, which equates to approximately 5% turnout of eligible voters. The entire Legislative Services, Legal Services team worked on the project along with many residents who stepped up and assisted with the voting stations, ensuring a very professionally administrative by-election. And also, Corporate Communications, administration has launched a Halloween Safety Tips campaign with enforcement that will give friendly reminders on how to have a safe Halloween evening. And the 2023 budget engagement wrapped up on October 7th. The city has nearly 1,500 residents. Visit the engagement site of those 290 participated in, participated in one of the engagement tools that were available, such as surveys, ideas, or question spaces.
All right, thanks for those highlights, Counselor Berg. Moving along to item number eight, there are no correspondence, there is no correspondence for today's moving, meeting. And number nine, delegation business. We had one delegate here today, the Community Foundation of Northwestern Alberta. Now is an opportunity for questions for administration and business arising. I'll recognize Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. No questions for administration. This is a wonderful project that I'm, I'm fully backed every year. And I take a lot from, from the information that they derive from the community in correlation with our own information that we, we pick up. So I would move that council move the, the request of $20,000 for Vital Signs to budget deliberations. Speaking of this, I just think that we should work with this in our normal budgetary processes. We do have pots of money. I think that we could adjudicate to this today, but there's no need for that. And I just think we should keep it standard and put it into budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That motion is in order. Comments or questions on the motion or for administration? Counselor Blackmore.
I do have a question for administration. Would we not have a bucket of money, a term I don't like, but.
We don't have buckets of money.
That would be set aside for community groups to access or apply for funding? It just seems a little strange to me that a request would come every two years rather than being held to an application process.
So just at a high level, before I defer to Ms. Whiteway or a Deputy CAO Miller, who has worked with community group funding previously, this is the first time we've had this request from this group. So, no? It's, it's, so it's been a regular carried-on item because I don't remember them actually coming to ask for the money. Ms. Whiteway?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So previously, 2021, they also did come in and request to be funded. There was a time when it was built into the city's budget. I'm not sure the history on what, what changed. But now it's, it appears that delegation, this has been the way that they have come forward as a delegate and requested the funds.
If I could just speak to that, it seems to me that it's an unfair process for other community groups who are accessing funding. I'm just not sure that this is the best way to handle that. I think maybe we need to look at a different approach for this type of request.
Ms. Whiteway, did you have something further, sorry?
I was just going to just add that that's something that administration could certainly work with and make sure that this is the best approach, or if there's another approach that we could recommend for.
I would appreciate that motion.
Thanks, I don't see anyone else in the queue. I had a question for administration. Mr. Miller, somebody who at this point is supporting the Chief of Staff bucket and with comms falling in there, is there any consideration that other reports that we're doing within the organization already collect this information and that the report itself should be skewed differently?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Doesn't sound like it's on.
Very good, yeah.
Sounds better, okay. That's certainly something I could talk to Mr. Toront about and get back to council.
Yeah, I mean, we do homeless reports, we do significant community reports. And I mean, this is valuable information. I just, if we're going to be doing the reports ourselves and they're doing the reports, I don't know if there's missing pieces that we'd be considering. The other item that I noticed on their budget is that there's a small amount to the, the, the report, or sorry, the budget request goes to printing. And I don't know how many copies we actually need or if this is a better service utilized electronically. So something for consideration for council. Seeing no one else, I'll call the question. And it carries unanimously. No notices of motions today. We will now move into our recess and we will be back at 6 o'clock. Thanks, everyone.
The City Council Meeting of October 31st. Thanks for joining us for our evening session. We have a couple items of business for tonight. Land Use Bylaw Amendment 1260-162, a childcare LUB tax amendment, and I will look to Ms. Patel to introduce. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. Administration is initiating text amendments to the land use bylaw to update the childcare facility definition. Government of Alberta introduced changes to the Childcare Licensing Act in the form of Bill 39, Alberta Early Learning and Childcare Act in the year 2019. The changes involved allowing overnight childcare. Also, under the new act, the childcare now falls into one of the two categories: facility-based or home-based childcare. The proposed amendment impacts childcare facilities only and do not include day homes which are overseen by licensed day home agency. Currently, the childcare facility definition specifically restricts overnight operation. The definition is also not in compliance with the new categorization of childcare in the provincial legislation. The phrase "without overnight accommodation" will be removed from the definition to now allow for overnight operations. To align the definition with the new act, the definition will specify clearly that the childcare facilities do not include day homes as defined by the Alberta Early Learning and Childcare Act. Other minor changes are done to make the definition consistent with the provincial legislation. A variety of stakeholders, including childcare facilities, were engaged during this process. With these proposed changes, there would be flexibility in childcare which would increase support and option for businesses and parents. Based on this background and analysis, administration recommends that council give first, second, and third reading to this amendment. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thanks for that introduction. Questions for administration? Seeing none, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment. I'm aware that there's no one online, so I'll ask if there's anyone here. A second time I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this amendment. And a third time, if there's anyone here to speak in support of this amendment. Seeing none, I'll see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this amendment. I'll ask a second time and recognizing that there is nobody online, I will ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the amendment of bylaw C-1260-162. And a third time, if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, look for business arising, and recognize Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much Mayor Clayton. I'll speak in support of this and move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-162 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
All right, thank you for that. That motion is in order. There's no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Platt, how do you vote? Counselor Platt votes in favor, and that carries unanimously. Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-162.
Motion's in order, an opportunity for discussion or debate, second reading to the bylaw amendment. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Teason.
You betcha. Thank you very much Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have third reading at this meeting.
Thank you Counselor Teason. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That passes unanimously. Counselor Teason.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-162 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
That motion is in order. This is the third reading here tonight, an amendment to the land use bylaw, bylaw C-1260-162. Seeing no one in the queue, I just wanted to speak in regards to the intent of this motion. I think it's a great opportunity. The amendment is solid. We know as a council that we've heard from organizations outside of our city that are interested in Grand Prairie as a market for 24-hour daycare which in turn supports health services. It supports many people that we know work shift work. So I think this is a great amendment, and I encourage council to vote in support of this amendment. Counselor Teason to close. Anything? You're good. Thank you so much.
Think you closed well Mayor Clayton.
All right, call the question. And that carries unanimously. All right, moving on to item 14.2, which is Cobblestone East Outline Plan bylaw C-1453, land use amendment, and land use amendment 1260-163. I will call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Just get my...
No worries.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. The city received an application to amend the Cobblestone East Outline Plan and to rezone the subject property from rural service area manufactured home community to small lot residential and combined density residential. The purpose of this application to allow for continued development of the Cobblestone East neighborhood. The proposed amendment would add a four hectare undeveloped property to the east of the planned area. This land was annexed into the city in 2016. The subject property is surrounded by residential neighborhoods and has parks and a school within walking distance. The following provisions of the municipal development plan are applicable to this proposal. The future land use, the subject site is designated as residential in the future land use map, and as you can see here, this does not deviate from that which was envisioned. Also, the municipal development plan states that council intends to convert all existing outline plans to statutory plans, and consistent with that, it's being presented in its entirety in order to convert it to, adopted by bylaw. Also, the MDP has a policy that states no more than 25% of the planned area should be zoned small lot residential. Administration has reviewed this proposal with respect to that policy and concluded that the policy intent is met. The area of the proposed amendments falls within the boundary of the Meadowview Area Structure Plan, and this proposal is consistent with that plan. Therefore, no amendments are required. The Cobblestone Outline Plan provides the detailed framework for future development within the planned area. The proposed area was shadow planned originally when it was adopted in 2007. However, the shadow planning did not include a comprehensive examination of infrastructure. Therefore, to amend the plan, city administration has reviewed the impacts of the proposed changes and negotiated changes to meet the city's goals for community safety and design. Administration supports the proposed amendments to the Cobblestone East Outline Plan. The proposed amendment would rezone the property to small lot residential and combined lot residential. Small lot residential is intended for single detached, semi-detached, and duplex dwellings, and the RC District is intended for low-medium residential development by allowing up to 12 units with compatible residential uses. The proposed amendments are consistent with the intent of the municipal development plan and the Meadowview Area Structure Plan. Administration does not foresee any negative impacts from approving these amendments. For these reasons, administration recommends that council gives three readings to bylaw C-1453, and bylaw 126163, and rescinds OP-0602. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Downing for the introduction. Comments or questions for administration? Recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Yes, thank you Mayor Clayton. When I'm looking at your map here, I believe that the piece of property in question is immediately south and slightly east of Ivy Lake. Is that correct?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the mayor. Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, so I will now look to see if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment. Come on forward, introduce yourself for those who may be watching at home.
Mike Frederickson with Helix Engineering. I just want to come up and speak in support of this. I've been involved in the outline plan since the beginning. We did shadow plan this area back in 2007, I believe, and at that time it was in the county of Grand Prairie. So I'm hoping this is just a housekeeping issue, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Questions from council? Seeing none? Thank you for coming. I will see if there's anyone else here to speak in support of this bylaw to adopt the Cobblestone East Outline Plan as well as the amendment to the land use bylaw. I will ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in support of tonight's outline plan and land use bylaw amendment. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to either of the three items of business in front of us tonight. Seeing that, recognizing there's no one online, I think you're just waiting, right Counselor O'Toole? Okay. I will ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Cobblestone East Outline Plan, or the amendment to the land use bylaw, or the rescinding of the Cobblestone East Outline Plan. And a third time, if you're here to speak or online in opposition. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, look for business arising. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you Mayor Given.
It must be Halloween tonight, eh?
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I will continue. Keep this on the down-low.
Oh, that's awesome.
I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1453 being a bylaw to adopt the Cobblestone East Outline Plan.
That motion is in order. Counselor O'Connor, me and O'Toole.
You've done it more than I have, so there you go.
I will remind council there's no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that we give, council give second reading to bylaw C-1453.
That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
I move the council have third reading of bylaw C-1453 at this meeting.
Thanks Counselor O'Toole. That motion is in order. That is a motion to have third reading here tonight at this meeting. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
And I move the council give third reading to bylaw C-1453 being a bylaw to adopt the Cobblestone East Outline Plan.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I will call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole, would you like to continue?
Yes, I will. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-163 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
That motion is in order for first reading of bylaw C-1260-163 being an amendment to the land use bylaw. No discussion or debate. Call the question. And that passes unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that we give second reading to bylaw C-1260-163.
That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-163 at this meeting.
Thank you for that. This motion must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight at this meeting. I'll call the question. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
I move the council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-163 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue for discussion or debate, I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Blackmore, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Blackmore votes in favor, and that carries unanimously. One more item of business. Counselor O'Toole, if you're up for it.
You betcha. And with all that motions, we've got one more. I move the council rescind the Cobblestone East Outline Plan OP-0602.
All right, this is a motion to rescind the outline plan OP-0602. Call the question. Seeing no one in the queue, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Moving on to delegation business, no evening delegation business. Council member reports. I'm going to start with Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Clayton. So a few things that I've attended over the last couple weeks. Yesterday, I attended a smudging at the Blossoming Garden of Hope as they open that up to the public tomorrow. I noticed that the fence came down today, so it's a beautiful park, a wonderful asset to our city, and something that I'm sure the community will embrace, not only this winter, but also especially next spring and summer, as it's a beautiful garden, number of trees, playground, and gazebo out there. So it's a terrific asset for our city, and I commend the families that have been a driving force in making this park a reality over the past six years. Attended the Chamber Mixer and Trade Show on Thursday. Wonderful conversations. In fact, I think I left at about 8:00, 8:30, and the thing formally wrapped up at 7:00, but just a lot of good communication. And again, it's an annual event that the Chamber does put on with the trade show, but they also do mixers each month, so if you're curious about that, head on over to the Chamber of Commerce website. Spoke at a Shell LiveWire event put on by Community Futures, which is always nice, and I'm not sure if this fell within the envelope of the past couple weeks, but went out with our Invest Grand Prairie team to visit a number of small businesses on the north end and just get their input on what it's like to be doing business here in Grand Prairie. And overall, it was a very successful day. And overall, it was a very successful day. So thank you.
Great, thanks for that. Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Start with the Grand Slam of Curling event. I would like to compliment the curling community for putting on a tremendous event, and that the, a lot of comments came back on how great the venue was in the Coca-Cola Center, which is now the Divine Works Building. People keep referring it to that, but the curling community loved the ability to be able to be in one building, and it was very well done. Attended the United Way kickoff and attended the Small Business Week Awards of Distinction. I was told I was a heckler, so it was no intent to be a heckler, but it ended up being that way. Attended the Peace Library System Meeting in Le Glass, and wonderful little restaurant there that makes tremendous sandwiches and soup, and we had a great meeting for the Peace Library System. Attended the Northwest Polytechnic President's Ball, and that was a very good event. I attended with CEO Nicolai, and it was very well attended. Met and greeted with our new counselor. Welcome, Mr. Pallett, to the council, and look forward to debating with you over the coming years. And I want to have a shout out to Dylan Bressi, who surprised me today and dressed up in my hat and with my rotary thing, and he's going on Halloween as Mike O'Connor, and I'm going, I don't know if that's scary or good or what.
Scary.
It's very scary, so whatever, whatever. So in his honor, I'm going to be Dylan Bressi. Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks for that. Counselor Blackmore?
I also attended a couple of the events at the curling event on the weekend. I really enjoy women's curling, so those are the events I attended, and I really, I'm always so impressed by how talented curlers are and how they don't get the respect maybe that they should, but they're excellent. I attended the Harvest Dine and Dance with my husband, which is the Friends of the Grand Prairie Spirit Foundation fundraiser. They were pretty well attended, and other than, they were having a few microphone issues. I think that all went well for them. As of October 1st, I was, have been appointed to the Peace Health Advisory Council, and so last Tuesday, I was in a meeting to get orientated to the Peace Health Advisory Council. I'm looking forward to the work that I'll be doing there, and I am on the committee to encourage more health professionals to move to Grand Prairie and to stay in Grand Prairie. And then I, with some other members of council, went to the Alberta Recreation and Parks Conference that was held in Jasper. I took a couple, attended a couple sessions there that I really enjoyed. One was on bees and bees in the community. I've always been fascinated by bees. When I was a teenager, I worked in my cousin's honey operation for a few years, so I'm pretty, I was just, it was probably one of the best sessions I've ever attended, partly because the presenter was so passionate about bees. I also attended a couple sessions, which both centered around creating community wellness strategies, how to encourage people that live in your community to become active and spend less screen time, become healthier, eat better, et cetera. So I will have a conversation or two with some of our administration about the ideas that were presented there. And that would conclude my report.
Thanks so much, Counselor Blackmore. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, it was a busy couple of weeks. I'll just start off with my external committees. On October 18th, I met with the Grand Prairie Storm Board. It was my last tour duty before Counselor Boss takes over as the lead for the Storm Board, but it was big business because we lost our outgoing, well, I guess Ryan Carter, our operations manager, it was his last day, and then we were informed and had to vote on our replacement for Ryan Carter, which happened to be Catherine Ridgway. So big loss for the city, a great game for the storm. I'm sort of mixed emotions on that. I know that she's going to do a great job for them, but sad to lose her here. And that was pretty much most of the business. We did look over the financials, and right now, they're looking pretty good, so it's always a good sign because it hasn't always been that way. On October 20th, had a meeting with CAB. It was a good meeting. We just ran over some policies and gave updates. And on October 28th, had a meeting online with the Grand Spirit Foundation where we had a couple of big policies that we had to approve that day. One was the union agreement where we approved a three-year deal that was negotiated quite well by our management. And then we did other policies on outbreak management, emergency procedures, and resident assessments. And most of those were including mental health into our policies because, as we know, mental health is a big thing nowadays, and taking care of it is important. It just wasn't reflected in the old policies that were created almost a decade ago, so we spruced those up. Outside of that, I had many of the events that have already been spoken of, but I also was at the Alberta Recreation and Parks Conference, and that was a very impressive conference. It was my first time ever going to that conference, and you know, usually I set the barb with what we do municipally, with Alberta municipalities or the Federation of Municipalities. Going to ARPA, like, the diversity of the offerings of the sessions was incredible, and I mentioned it to Counselor Bressi earlier today, I was like, hey, there's a little thing that Alberta municipality is still good, but if we could have those kind of offerings for elected officials, I think our province would be better served. So good job for ARPA and the organizing committee. And who knew, our own Katie Bieberdorf is the co-chair of that as far as putting that event together. So, and it was highly successful, over 500 people attended. Also was at the Grand Slam Pinties event on Friday and Saturday. I took in Dewali. I think Counselor O'Toole and Mayor Clayton and I, we braved the winter roads. Gladys went ahead of us, but just to make it back for Dewali, and it was such a great celebration. Nearly sold out. It was great to see so much color, so much culture, and such a good time, bringing light into the darkness and celebrating that with our East Indian, Hindu, and Sikh communities. Of course, there are many other people there as well. Finally, I'll just make note that it's a good eye-opener for Small Business Week. I took part in the Small Business Blitz, and we tackled Richmond. I was only around for about 12 of the businesses as I had to get to that storm meeting on the same day, but it was, it was good to be able to talk with those businesses in Richmond, and pretty much a consensus across the board, labor is the biggest issue rolling in our community, retaining, attracting, and keeping, and I know that our council and our administration is very mindful of that, but it's always good to get that reassurance in the community that we're on the right track, and hopefully, we can help out in whatever way we can for our small businesses. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I got to get it ready at least once tonight. I attended the provincial competitive sport meeting held in Ebington, but it was actually through Zoom. It was an hour and a half of good information throughout the entire province that we were able to share, and there's some events happening and some that are shutting down for a little while, and that includes Ebington. They put a moratorium on competitive sports, and that'll probably last till the end of this year. I also attended the ABMA, which is the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association. We had a corporate leadership team, you might call us. We, we reviewed a grant project and discussed a new employee, and it is looking pretty positive for ABMA to grow, as there's about nine municipalities that are just stomping at the door right now. So we're going to have representatives all over Alberta, including the South, which has been holding out for a number of years, but it looks like they're coming on board now, so. On another note, I attended the Winter Games 2024 meeting where I've taken on the role of food services for one of the schools that are going to be serving food, and not only in the building, but getting food out to the different destinations, including Nighthawk and Evergreen Park and wherever else the sports are going to be held. Still some serious discussion going on, on which facilities are going to be used, but yeah, it's 18 months away, and we're still planning right now. And I also attended the United Way Alberta Northwest launch, and talking about ARPA, one of the most interesting things was the tea ceremony. The storytelling was unbelievable, the drumming and the singing was unbelievable, and the round dance, I tell you, they got a story to tell, and they told it very well. And I'm very happy that I didn't push that off to the side. I'm very pleased that I was able to attend that. There was, yeah, very moving. And with that, I also attended the Decoy Community Hub Project fundraising for the decoy armories, and we've started another round of grant applications and marketing the facilities, so you may hear it come up in the news here in the future that we're going to start on the construction. And that's just getting the decoy armory back up to where it's a presentable building once again, and fix some of the cracks in mortar and new paint, and maybe expand it a little bit, so that's my report.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. And last but not least, welcome, Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And I guess I want to start with thanking administration the last week. I was sworn in a week ago, and the chiefs of staff now and the city manager and legislative services have been amazing, well, getting me back up to speed as quick as possible in a week, and also allowed me a really good opportunity to have a chat with them about, you know, what I've heard while I was on the campaign trail and what I've missed the last year as well, so really want to thank them a lot for that. So sworn Monday, Tuesday, I had my first standoff from Counselor Berg to go to a Nighthawk Committee, which was great to, you know, get up to speed on a board that I wasn't part of in the last term, but just Jonathan, Clarkson, I feel for him and his organization. Like was mentioned earlier by Counselor Thiessen, they're having some serious challenges with staffing already, and the season hasn't started, so I, you know, hope that it works out for them because they're just tough with the seasonal environment and a winter environment where they're at. So hopefully, they can get the bodies to do what they can do with the Hill because it's a, it's a great part of our community. The next day, I had the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of the city on the Alberta City Treasurers Meeting, so I got to come with Ms. White Way and some of the city staff to an event where I was quite happy to be there, and just knowing that there is collaboration going on with our municipalities through our treasures, and so they probably sat and complained about councils and what we do and budget, but I'm sure there was some productive stuff outside of that that was happening, too, and I think it's really good to hear our organization working with other municipalities around the province within their organization, because I'm sure the think tank goes a long way. And also, on Saturday, I was really excited to go and go to the Pronez event. They do a awards night, and so it was a parade of children getting up on that stage, 750 people strong in that club now between the I Can Swim and the Pronez program, but the amount of gold medals and medals that are being won out of that Pronez swim program, I really, for Alex and Matt and the coaches, they've done a phenomenal job. I know my kids were in that program seven years ago when Alex got here, and it was, he was reinventing it, so to speak, and the amount of engagement, they had to actually have an election for a board of governors, so when you hear of a lot of associations that are struggling, I'm really proud, the Pronez is one that's doing really well, and had some great comments about the city and their relationship together. So it was nice to be back in the fold, and it was fun to have that first week back, so thanks for letting me back, everybody, and enjoying you being around the table again.
Thanks so much, Counselor Platt. I didn't have a lot to report this week, or this meeting, but I'll just go through a few things that weren't mentioned. Had the opportunity to have breakfast with a doctor who is moving here, an anesthesiologist moving here from South Africa, so her and her husband, a young couple, mid-30s, super excited to move here because of the fact that all the urban amenities that we have, and she didn't have to sit in traffic an hour each way to get to work. So she was truly very happy about that opportunity, and they were looking to move here shortly. Also attended with many counselors and participated in the Small Business Week Blitz, visiting businesses across the city and congratulating them and thanking them for the work they do in our community, not only by offering employment, but by supporting nonprofits and volunteering and the many numerous things that small business owners do. So thanks to the Chamber, thanks to Invest GP for putting that together. It was a good week of celebration, but also I just really enjoyed getting out to meet some business owners. Then I headed south with some members of administration and attended the Midsize City Mayor Caucus Meetings in Airdrie. It was a good meeting. We're now 24 members strong, ranging in size from about 13,000 to 100,000, representing over a million people and 34 constituency associations. Had an opportunity during that few days we were there, Mayor Gonda came to visit us for a bit, also had a brief tour of Airdrie and talking about their economic development and their significant growth that they're facing that community, so I really enjoyed my time in Airdrie. Went to, also through Zoom, because it wasn't mentioned, Counselor Bressi and Counselor O'Toole, thank you for representing us at the meeting with administration and the RCMP commanding officer, so I called in for Zoom on that one. Good discussion, as we do on a regular basis, talk with K-Division and represent our municipality in those discussions, and in terms of our needs and where the opportunity to strengthen that relationship are and our service needs. So that was a good discussion. Also, had a call, just a heads up, I was asked to speak on a Leadership Retreat Panel coming up at the end of November at U of A. It's a retreat for the Facility of Medicine and Dentistry. I'm talking about where the U of A, what they can do to support municipalities, but also in turn, what municipalities need from these institutions that are educating our doctors of the future, so I'm looking forward to that coming up. Myself, the CEO Nicolay, as well as some members of our administration team, went to Calgary in conjunction with our municipal partners, the County of Grand Prairie and the MDA Greenview to host the Northwest Energy Evening. We hosted it with about 38 C-suite oil and gas executives, where we had an opportunity to update things that were happening in the region, opportunities, talk about our collaborative approach to the region and how we truly believe that investment in our region is good for each of us. During that as well, CEO Nicolay hosted a panel with representatives from Enbridge, Mr. Pat Carlson, who you may be familiar with, formerly of Seven Generations, as well as a member of the Infrastructure Bank of Canada. Great discussion, talking about the future, and the big takeaway for me, Minister Peter Guthrie, newly appointed Minister of Energy, was in attendance, and it was a great opportunity for him to hear firsthand the opportunities in our region, the, the great things that we're doing in renewable energy that people don't talk about, and, and the growth, that potential growth in our region. It was his first event in official capacity, so it was great to have him there. Also wanted to thank Emily Allard for emceeing our event that evening, so it was a great, well-attended, levels, multiple levels of government, and I really enjoyed ourselves, and we've heard great feedback since. I, with my colleagues, attended Alberta Rec and Parks Association Conference. Couple lessons learned. I know Counselor O'Toole went to a session on, on food sustainability and how municipalities can support within their own region, so that was a great conversation. I attended a session in strengthening relationships in Indigenous and multicultural relations, so I thought that was a great session. Also went to a session where we talked about use, park use within our city, where we sometimes forget land that we have and how we, what we can do to enhance that without doing significant projects, just sort of enhance and tweak the amenities that we already have. Also had a call with Mayor Hanson and Mayor Darcy from Dawson Creek, newly elected, to talk in future about what the growth of our Peace Country Coalition could look like, opportunities for discussion and advocacy, and how we can support each other. As we know, we don't recognize that border, whether it be industry or sport or tourism, the highway truly goes both ways, so talking about some collaborative vision and approach in that coming up. And last but last not least, I wanted to read out a message and show you a video on behalf of Sportsnet. They, the message was, I hope that everyone has taken some time to relax after a very successful event. after a very successful event. This is in reference to the Pinty Grand Slam Curling. They said, we were originally scheduled to host this event in 2020, and finally, we're so happy to make it happen in 2022. It took months of volunteering, 200 volunteers to host 64 teams from all over the world, the largest grand slam of curling field ever, something truly to be proud of for our community. We want to thank the committee chairs for stepping up along the amazing City of Grand Prairie staff for all their incredible time and support. So on behalf of the players, the Sportsnet crew and our team, we thank you so much for taking on this event, which is double the size of any other event in the season. You should be proud, Grand Prairie. Sportsnet is truly proud. Big thanks to all our volunteers and all our staff. And I just want to show you this cool thank you video. So yet again, Grand Prairie does an excellent job. We truly are a game city and very proud of the work we do. But big thank you to Sportsnet for putting this together. But an even bigger thank you to all the volunteers and all of the people from our team that took the time to support this event, truly something we should be proud of. And with that, I will call meeting adjourned and enjoy the rest of your evening. Happy Halloween.